All right, let's go ahead and get started here, folks. We have no minutes to review tonight, so we still have minutes pending from our last meeting hopefully we'll get to at our next meeting next Wednesday. So let's go straight to the Village Center Planning Projects. We have hot off the presses, which I think none of us have even looked at, a most recent set of revisions from the Cecil Group on North Amherst and Atkins Corner. Do you know anything about this at all, Jonathan?
Well, I can tell that there is, on the map, there is one set of changes for North Amherst. The two properties on the west side of Montague Road, immediately north of the river, are included in the North Amherst Village Center Form-Based District, whereas previously they were not.
I'm sorry, which properties?
You can't see them under the legend, but there are two properties on the left-hand west side of Montague Road, north of the river, above the river.
You see it?
Yeah, that are now included, yeah, right in here. That are now included in the North Amherst Village Center Form-Based District, whereas previously they were in the Village Form Residence Overlay District.
And they changed the name of the neighborhood residence?
Yes. Yes, mostly to conform with our standard typology in terms of, or typography, whichever it is.
And have you talked to them at all about the structural changes we talked about most recently in terms of where to put all of this in the zoning bylaw?
Yes, this is, I haven't had a chance to look at that yet, it's 109 pages, but I'm convinced that the bulk of the form-based regulations will be in a new Article 16. And they received all of your comments and I trust responded to them. I can also report on a couple of responses to the earlier draft, or people's understanding of the earlier draft. There was concern voiced by this gentleman.
Joe Sacco, I am Village I.
Okay.
Mr. Sacco was concerned that the North Amherst Village Center Overlay, or Form-Based District, would restrict the range of potential uses of his current former filling station that he now uses for auto repairs. A look at the most recent, still hot off the press, use chart indicates that automotive filling stations, which I think was one of the uses in which he was interested, would be allowed by special permit, the overlay district, or in the form-based district.
And that's currently in the comm. district, right?
That's correct. No, it's currently the Village Center Business district, where-
Also the special permit?
Same regulation. So that regulation is not changing.
So the gas pumps would still be allowed by special permit?
Yes, by special permit. There you go. The other, I believe the other use in which you had expressed interest was the possibility for a convenience store. Let me just quickly check that. That would be by right through site plan review approval. So it would be by right through site plan review approval by the planning board.
I'm sorry, I'm hard of hearing.
Oh. A convenience store would be allowed through site plan review approval by the planning board, which is a right, a use by right. They just get to say how it's laid out, things like that. So the two uses in which you had expressed interest, or about which, the loss of which you had expressed concern, are included and allowed under the proposed-
So essentially, for all practical purposes, there's been no change in my zoning other than, as you explained to me, if the property was dormant for more than two years or whatever.
The, yeah, the use, the current use is grandfathered, and any, either of the two uses that you had expressed interest in would be allowed in one way or another. The biggest change is going to be about the physical form that it takes. That's really what form-based zoning is about, is about design and layout and so forth. So if you went to make major changes in the layout, the regulations would address that, but not the use. The uses are both permitted.
So in particular, the form-based regulations that we're looking here are looking to encourage, looking to discourage development that has a large building setback far on the property with parking set in front of the property, which is kind of the pattern that you get along that road currently with some buildings. So the regulations that we're proposing here would discourage that, would encourage you to build closer to the street and engage a little bit more with what's going on in the street. So there would be more control over how the property would have to look and relate to neighboring properties, but the uses themselves that you're looking at would be allowed.
The other concern that had been expressed, still being expressed by Hampshire College, and we're going to try and sit down and talk to them to answer their questions, is the establishment, if you turn to the map, Figure 1B, of the Educational Form Overlay District within a 200-foot setback from the edge of the right-of-way line. Their concern is that is the area that they have planned as a portion of their cultural village, and their concern is that the form-based regulations that would apply in that 200-foot setback would impose unreasonable restrictions on their ability to create architectural or landscape statements that they thought would be appropriate for that village. Our response to date has been, we don't see how, since it's within, it's 200 feet back one, so any building further back than that wouldn't be affected by it. It doesn't change the uses in any way whatsoever. The uses are still, the use is permitted under the underlying educational district. And that does not seem, the form-based regulations do not seem to be a barrier to creative architectural or landscape design. We'll have that conversation with them and see where that goes. That had been their principal concern.
And has the shape of that changed? I don't recall it having been L-shaped like this.
It simply follows the, wherever property of Hampshire College occurs across the street from existing or proposed AC form-based district, the overlay district was proposed in order to assure that as you go down the street, you have a reasonably consistent treatment of new development on both sides of the street.
I just didn't remember that portion along 116 there, but that just might be my memory.
I believe it was there.
Chris?
Could that setback be no greater than the distance of the Eric Carl Museum from West Bay Road? I mean, 200 feet is sort of an arbitrary number in some ways, so if you knew where the Eric Carl Museum was, where its setback was, maybe the setback line for this could be set to that line. And then-
Perfectly reasonable.
You mean the building itself, Chris, or the property on which it sits?
The building itself, wherever that building sits, you know, maybe that could be the setback line for this Education Form Overlay District. So anything, the side of that would conform to the requirements of the district, but beyond that, wouldn't have to conform, and you could point out to them that, well, Eric Carl Museum, you know, sits very nicely on this property beyond that line, so they may not have as much of an objection.
The, are there any issues, Jonathan, with regulating or restricting what can happen within the educational district? Because the way we have the educational district written is pretty loose, like it allows essentially anything that can be conducted under the auspices of an educational institution. So is it legitimate for us to control that in any way?
The consultants, I guess, and I would agree, believe so. Not, again, not in terms of the uses. There would not be any regulation of the uses. What would be regulated is the way in which land and buildings would be laid out immediately adjacent to a regulated village, a mixed-use village, so that there would be some consistency between the sides of the street. I think it could be argued, and I think they probably will argue, that when you have a separation between a village center and a campus, the two can be different characters. And I think the presumption is that they would be of different characters. We also pointed out in response to their initial concerns that the proposed language includes provisions for alternative compliance, that so long as the, whatever is being proposed meets the criteria, that meets the purposes of the form-based code, the community's purposes in establishing it in the first place, the permit-granting body can accept an alternative to strict adherence to the form-based building and site design regulations. So there is that flexibility, and I think principally their concern is about flexibility.
You've been communicating with them directly?
On and off, yes.
And so, okay, last few days. So they're aware of this meeting tonight and presumably aware of next week's meeting?
They are.
Okay. So if you talk to them again, please make sure that definitely they're aware of next week, so that they have the opportunity to come in and talk to us firsthand if they want to.
They are aware of next week, and we will probably try and sit down with them ahead of time, so that they, any questions that they have can be vetted.
Okay. You guys have any questions or comments?
I had a bunch of, made a bunch of notes on the previous draft. I don't know whether it's worth coming through them now.
Sure, I think it is, because we didn't really have a chance to talk much about it last time, so yeah, go ahead.
I guess I had a question about the dimensional table. Just for clarification, are we choosing between one or the other of the options that they presented last time, or is that, have they decided to go?
They are proposing to include the numbers in, rather than a reference, the numbers themselves in the existing table, so people don't have to go hunting around in various parts of the bylaw to find those.
Okay. And then I had, I wasn't sure how that, how that table related to table, proposed table 4.6.3, which is on page 12 of the packet.
To the extent that there's overlap, they should be the same. To the extent that the smaller table addresses dimensional aspects that the larger table does not, they would be different, because they're regulating things that are not currently regulated.
Well, for instance, the very first line in the draft, in the new Table 3, it says basic minimal lot area, proposing 12,000. But then it appears that there's no man, no max for several of the building types, and then 4,000 or 5,000 for some others. So I wasn't sure how to interpret that.
I think, actually, in the most recent version, what they have done is taken, I'm not sure that this addresses your question directly, but it may address the intent of the question. They have included the previous numbers in the table itself, and then in the footnotes, which is on the next page. At the bottom of the footnotes, they have added a footnote that includes the new table. And it does not, the two do not address the same things. The distinction, I guess, yeah, one, the one refers to the other in terms of lot frontage, but everything is now in the table itself and its footnotes, and arranged so that it only appears once, whatever is being regulated.
I've never seen that.
We just, we got this 15, it was literally 15 minutes before the meeting started.
Is this the one that just came in?
Yes.
So I guess, a lot of my questions had to do with how to interpret the dimensional table, so.
So maybe the dimensional ones, we can table, so to speak, until next time around, until we've had a chance to figure out what it is that's in the latest draft.
I also, there's also, this also may have been taken care of, and I guess if this table 4.6.3 is no longer in this chapter, it appears to be a discrepancy between this table and table 4.6.2, as far as building types allowed. Again, I'm not sure how to interpret that. For instance, 4.6.2 suggests that civic buildings are not anticipated in AC, but 4.6.3 suggests that they are. In other words, the X's don't match up. In 4.6.3, village residential building and site type, X's all the way across, but in 4.6.2, only in North Amherst. So I, you know, I think it's either an oversight, or I just don't know how to, I mean-
It entirely well may be. We'll check.
And then on the diagrams, this also may be an oversight, a feastage of an old previous use for these pictures, but for, Figure 4.6.1, it seems to include setback regulations or something. It says, "Street yard, building placement varies 10 to 30 feet."
I'm sorry, Rob, what page are you on?
This is page four.
Four?
Four.
There are many pages here that are labeled Figure 4.6.1.
Yeah, okay, so I think any one of them, they all suggest a building placement, which I assume is synonymous with setback. And it says it varies, there's a minimum and a maximum, but those numbers don't correspond to other tables that they provided us about what the minimum and maximum should be. So Table 4.6.3 shows yard, street yard setbacks of 5 to 20 feet, but then this picture show 10 to 30, or 20 to 40. So obviously those should be the same, I would think.
It's shown in the new dimensional table as 5 to 20. Five, minimum, 20, maximum.
So the pictures should not be contradicting?
That's correct, yeah. That would be a good idea.
And on the same page there, Figure 4.6.1, in the description at the bottom-left corner, it says, last, the second-to-last sentence says, "A single species of tree is planted in opportunistic alignment along the street." That seems a little strange to me, that we're requiring a single-
We actually had an extended conversation with the consultants about that, and maybe that they neglected to reflect that, but the argument was that, one, you want to avoid a monoculture just for reasons of not losing them all at once, and, two, you wanted, within variety, you wanted some kind of consistency in terms of form, size, shape, and so forth. You didn't want a little, you know, mountain ash next to a secamore. And they were going to address that in one way or another.
So may I ask a question about your question? It could mean that they want a single species of tree planted on just one property, because the way this is going to be used is that someone will come in with one property to be developed, and it's not, you know, necessarily applying to the whole street, I guess is what I'm saying. But what Jonathan said was true in any event, that it would still be a monoculture even if it just related to one property.
The discussion went back and forth, and in part, there is a, an argument to be made, particularly now that we have any more disease-resistant cultivars of different species, including native species, that as a design approach, it's pleasant to have the single species of trees in some areas. We, in fact, in part of that discussion, I was reminiscing about when I was young here and remembered driving along North Pleasant Street in the vicinity of the post office and going through what was essentially a green tunnel of the elms that had survived the 1938 hurricane, which were subsequently lost to Dutch elm disease. But they now have disease-resistant varieties, and so, I think the intent here is to establish a balance, to have neither extreme in place. Chris's argument makes perfect sense, that on a specific property, when you're trying to create a particular design statement about the building and the landscape and so forth, it might make sense to have a single species of, what are effectively street trees, as opposed to specimen trees, as opposed to, you know, plantings in a garden or whatever. But that is one of the, one of the things we need to keep an eye on.
In general, are the existing streets categorized by the street type? Or are we going to do that, or is somebody going to do that? In other words, can we say that Sunderland Road is commercial/civic, or commercial, or what? Is that going to be, you know, written down somewhere?
I believe that is referenced somewhere in the-
There's a table on page two that says what types of streets are allowed in each district, but that, that doesn't help much, because essentially all of them are allowed in North Amherst. And I had that question also, in terms of, this draws very clear distinctions among the different types of streets, but it doesn't say anything about what type of street goes where.
Although, helpfully, in the download, all of the graphics for the street types have disappeared, the tables nonetheless remain at the bottom, and for each individual street type in the tables, or the illustrations at the bottom, it lists examples of the street type. So for instance, commercial/civic street type, it lists Sunderland Road, south of the Mill River, Meadow Street, a portion of it, North Pleasant Street, a portion of it, Pine Street, a portion of it. Then when you get to commercial street types, Sunderland Road, West Bay Road, West Street. So it's, this is establishing a format, so that as we go along, we have these four basic types, and address additional village centers. We can, part of the amendments, as we address those, would simply be adding those streets to these tabular presentations and identifying it in that way. Same thing with village residential, Street Montague Road, Coles Road, et cetera.
Chris?
I was wondering if we should get input from Jason Skeels, the town engineer, and also from Guilford on this? Because they probably have similar designations for streets that they use. It would be good to have them mesh.
Do you mind if I follow up on that? So I'm not sure how much detail they have in there. So you were citing streets that, let's say, partial, or portions of certain streets?
And where it is a portion, they identify that portion.
Oh, they do identify, okay. Because it seems to me that it is important to know on the ground which streets fall into which category, because these are regulations about what you do on those streets and how it needs to be built, and what the setbacks are, and they're different from each other. So it would seem important to know, if you're on Meadow Street, is this portion of Meadow Street X or Y? Because the rules are going to be different depending on what the answer to that question is.
And for a new street, if someone wants to create a new street, for instance, how, is there any restriction on what kind of a street could be created?
I think it would have to fall into one of the types.
Yeah.
In North Amherst, for instance, they created the type of access street in order, specifically to address that, that is, as access streets are created on the interior of the triangle between Sunderland Road and Montague and Coles Road, that this would be the street type that would apply.
So-
New roadways associated with interior block development is what it says in this version, in the newest version. Sorry, I have to translate here.
Because both places have new roads envisioned at some point, and so I just, it just does, it's not clear to me that the person who owns the place where the road is going to be would have a choice, or whether that is guided by form somehow. You're suggesting that a new road that connects major ones is going to be by default an access?
Well, the language here says interior block development. So for instance, the roadway that is proposed from the, that would run from the west, southwest corner of the access road running around Atkins Farm Market, the new road that's in the process of being built there, that would run from the southwest corner of that up to, Rambling Road, would be an access street type, because it's an interior block, or so goes the theory. If an entirely new roadway was created, and it was intended to be a larger, more significant roadway, and I'm sort of hard put to think where we'd do that, that would be part of the process of creating it, that the planning board and others would make a decision about, maybe even ask town meeting, or amend the town, the bylaw, the zoning bylaw, to name that street as one of the streets under a specific type.
Right, I think there is some, you can't make a private street, so it would have to be a public street.
Chris?
I'm a little, what should I say, not clear about the intersection of this with the DPW's work, because often the DPW does things without consulting the planning board. In fact, I think most often they do things without consulting the planning board. They may consult the DRB if they're working in a downtown area, but otherwise, I think it's really the select board who is involved in what happens in the streets, right?
In terms of making incremental changes, yes. In terms of what happens within the right-of-way, the public right-of-way, when you're establishing, when you're doing more significant projects, or you're establishing a new road, as in this case, in areas where you have these regulations. One of the reasons why DPW is actually interested in this, and also interested in the transportation plan, is it's looking for clear, you know, guidelines. What's the template that we're supposed to use here, so they don't have to get into wrangling over, what's this, or it's that, it's whatever, it says what it is, and you go ahead and do it that way. So yes, we do need, this needs to be run by Guilford and Jason and the rest.
Do you have more?
I do have more, yeah. Don't mind, I'm trying to remember, I didn't know where this is referenced, but I have a note that says about parking, this is on page 25, it starts on page 25, I don't know where exactly my note is relevant to. Are, is there a range of parking spaces? I guess this relates to the table, 4.6.1. Are there minimum and maximum spaces, or is there just one number? If you have a certain development, you have one number of parking spaces that you have to have? Or is there a range like there is for other things?
Are you talking about numbers of spaces, or sizes of spaces?
Numbers of spaces.
Well, one of the characteristics, before I try to give you a specific answer, while I'm reading this quickly, one of the characteristics of these regulations is to try and reduce the amount of parking. the amount of parking required.
Right, encourage shared parking, which is great, but...
For instance, when they're talking about expanded existing uses under here, the requirement is to provide 75% of the spaces required under Article VII for the uses other than residential dwelling units. And they're doing one parking space per bedroom, for one and ten, two-bedroom units, two parking spaces per units with three or more bedrooms, for all dwelling units in the building. This is under the new, the new language here. So the intent generally is to reduce overall. Chris?
In our current zoning bylaw, there's sort of a valve, a safety valve, that allows the planning board and the zoning board to make modifications to the requirements for parking, and that might be a good idea to put in here, because these are, you know, really good guidelines, but there might be some cases where, for whatever reason, the planning board or zoning board of appeals would feel that more or less spaces were necessary.
I think there was a request that they referenced that, I haven't found it yet.
I think 4.671 paragraph, 4.671. Does answer my question, I don't know why I didn't notice it before. Second sentence says, "Acquired number of spaces shall be interpreted as both a minimum and a maximum."
Oh, it does, in here, it says, "Parking waivers, modifications, or expansions may be permitted by the permit granting board or special permit granting authority under the provisions of Section 7.90," which is that reference section, so they did include that.
Jonathan, on the numbers that you were talking about, I'm not sure, this might have changed, because I don't think mine references anything about bedrooms.
This is in reference only to parking requirements for residential uses.
Yeah, so I'm looking at the table that's labeled 4.671?
It's also specific to the expansion of existing uses, as opposed to the creation of new uses.
That table is specific to the...
No, this is the provision I read.
Okay. Where is that provision?
It's not in there.
Okay. Thus, my difficulty in finding it.
That's right.
So the table that's in both of ours does apply to new construction. So, in terms of reducing parking requirement, I'm actually reading this as maybe increasing over what we have now. So, in particular, for a multi-unit building, like an apartment or something, I would think that the second row would apply, single-family attached or multifamily dwelling buildings with three or more dwellings is requiring 2.0 spaces per dwelling unit, which is what we do now, plus one guest space for every 10 units. So the net impact of that for a larger building would be to require more parking than our current regulations require.
Again, as under the existing regulations, those are the minimums, and what happens is, most often, people are wanting to provide more parking than the bylaw requires, because they want to make sure that they've got their uses covered. So, yeah, yes.
Chris, I'm sorry.
If you have that stopgap measure, that 7.90 measure, you would be able to alter that number?
Sure, yes.
The board would be able to.
4.6730, page 28. This paragraph seems to provide for the possibility of parking in front by special permit.
I'm sorry, for what?
It seems, it seems to, this seems to be a provision to allow parking in front, which otherwise we don't want. By special permit, off-street park.
Yeah, that is, that was, you recall that in the commercial zone, or the commercial street type area we were talking about, alterations of existing developed properties were encouraging that parking be moved from the front to at least one side, and that building additions come toward the front and so forth. What that, I think this does is allow for the possibility that parking, when an alteration occurs, can remain in front, or some of it can, but you have to set it at least 20 feet back from the road boundary, and you have to provide sufficient screening. So this is one of the several places where they are trying to allow for existing uses to continue, but to make incremental change as improvements and redevelopment occurs.
Okay, so would, if, if you're going to make an alteration to an existing use, unless you get the special permit to keep your parking in front, you're going to have to eliminate it?
That's right.
Okay. In Section 4.674, 4.6740, number three, it seems to say that off-street parking may be allowed with pervious materials only by special permit.
It says previous.
Yeah, previous.
Pre-used.
So, in other words, that's putting a barrier up to something that we otherwise might want to encourage. That might be appropriate, I don't know, but I'd just like to discuss that, or ask why, why they're suggesting a special permit, instead of just allowing it, allowing pervious parking.
I think, turf grid, yeah, I think a previous, a couple places in this one too. I think the default that they want is to have permanent parking surfaces. And I think what we need to do is have a conversation about what that means, that some pervious parking surfaces are permanent, and they don't want people just throwing down, you know, trap rock gravel, and saying, "I paved my parking area." So, trying to establish a high enough threshold from which you can then come back, if you need to.
Okay.
Just to follow up on that, though, I'm not convinced that that's, I understand that that may have been the intent, but that might not be what it actually says. I mean, to me, it reads as if it's treating pervious parking materials, I'm not even sure if pervious is a word, but...
It is.
It is? Okay. It's treating pervious parking materials as sort of an exception, it's saying that they may be used for supplemental parking areas, where excess parking is necessary on a temporary basis. To me, the implication is that it's only reasonable in those circumstances. You can use it for a supplemental parking area, but not for a primary parking area, and I don't think that is in keeping with the principles we've been trying to promote.
We can communicate that to them. Chris?
I wonder if this is related to the idea that they work primarily in an urban environment, and that these rules may be applicable in that environment, but here, in rural areas, we can deal with more impervious materials, more pervious materials.
All right, it's a response to Hurricane Irene.
And the last thing that I have is, all of Section 4.68, the design standards, basically, it's, it seems, these seem to be more recommendations, and maybe that's all we want, I mean, it's good to have, to encode our recommendations, our desires, but it doesn't seem like a lot of the stuff is enforceable, so I wasn't sure how, whether it should be stronger, or whether it is fine the way it is, it's just something I wanted to raise.
Yeah, I was wondering about that also, there's a whole lot of, to the extent feasible, and should, and various statements about things that are desired but not necessarily required, through all of this, and I had a lot of question about how much of that could be required.
This is, a lot of this is stuff that we talked about for the development modification and stuff, it's tied in somehow.
In the copy I have, there's a lot of shalls, as opposed to when feasible, there's an occasional should, but most of it is shalls. I did, I just found a section here on street trees, "A specified in table reference and street types, the public frontage shall include trees planted in a spacing pattern as described of varied species with shade canopies of a height that at maturity clear three stories, but remain predominantly clear of building frontages. The introduced landscape shall include primarily of durable species tolerant of salt and soil compaction."
So are you saying that may have changed in the latest draft, Jonathan?
That's in the latest draft, I think it was in the original as well.
Yeah.
4.681.
So in terms of, you were stating that there's a whole lot of shalls and requirements in the version that you got?
That, and the fact that we were talking earlier about the trees, reference to, you know, single species.
Yep.
The requirement is written out, specifically references varied species.
So, so I don't necessarily expect these folks to be able to respond to what they're promulgating in this draft here, but that might be something that we follow up with Steve on, in terms of asking him for more details on how other communities have been able to react to that and enforce provisions that are encouragements rather than requirements.
I think to the extent possible, these are requirements, and as was done in a number of other places, although apparently backwards in terms of pervious materials, you want the fallback to be by special permit, you don't want, you want the preliminary, the default regulation to be a requirement.
May I say something about that?
You can.
I don't think you want to require people to have impervious materials. I think it requires a lot of, I'm sorry, I said that wrong again.
Pervious.
Yes, I think it's a mistake to require people to have pervious materials, because it requires a lot of extra maintenance, and some landowners are willing to do that, as witnessed by the NEE, but many are not willing to do that and have enough hard time taking care of their properties as it is, so to add that extra burden, I think, would be not useful. And the other thing is, who's going to go around and make sure that they do maintain it properly? And if they don't maintain it properly, it's going to act just like impervious materials.
Yep. I absolutely agree that they shouldn't be required to, but I also think that we shouldn't be putting barriers in place for people that do want to pursue that. So NEE didn't need to get a special permit from us in order to be able to use their permeable pavers. We gave them credit for doing so, quite the opposite.
One more point.
You said that the last one was your last one.
I thought it was, but I, and that's just to observe that there are two points that I heard a lot from the Caesar Group as we were going through the process, that are not shown in here, and that's specific reference to New England vernacular. And two is enforced variation of building setbacks and orientations. You know, they talked about every building, different orientation or different setbacks. And that's, I don't think I saw that in here, I don't know that it's important, but I just wanted to raise that as something that we heard, but didn't see here.
So I saw the setback requirement as allowing variation, but not requiring, is that...
Yeah.
So I'll state that it was not entirely clear to me that the enforced variation aspect of it was necessarily desirable. I mean, I understood the points that they were making about that being potentially useful, I think, but I wasn't entirely convinced that that was workable and really exactly what we want to have in those neighborhoods. So I'm not sure if they changed their minds about that, or if they just neglected to include it, or what.
I think that what, I think of what you have is minimum and maximum setbacks, and what happens is, people propose what they propose, the permit granting body looks at it in the context of the setting, whatever that is, said, "Had you thought about moving it three feet forward," or whatever. And so there's more room for negotiation about where a building ends up, and it's not a, your building is here, then the next building has to be six feet away, or something. There are all sorts of circumstances under which you would want to have, at least for some period, a consistent setback.
Yes.
Particularly if they're related to each other in some way, even if they're under different ownerships. So I think what they're trying to do is allow for as much flexibility within the enforced variation as possible.
And I'm okay with that, too, I guess what I'm saying is, I'm glad that there wasn't too much strict requirement for variation in here.
I think I am, too, yeah. It's probably more appropriate in a much larger area. You don't want to have a huge area be all the same, or potentially all the same, but there's, this is small enough that even if it is all the same, which it looks like there's a cycle interview or special permit, make it not all the same, it still wouldn't be bad for either of these areas.
Okay, anything else, Richard?
I have a question for you all. Would you prefer, I'm going to be preparing packets for the planning board for next week's meeting, would you prefer to have all of this material printed out and mailed to you, or would you prefer to get a link in your email?
Paper copy of it?
I would like to have a paper copy of the latest draft that we got, yes, please.
It does need to be mailed, I can pick it up.
I still have a very electronic. With the exception of a section that they've excerpted and done it 11 by 17 to make it easier to read, the entire document is one document, it's 109 pages, but it's one document.
We can print it back to back?
Yes, we can.
So you received an electronic copy of that today?
Received a link.
A link to PDF sitting somewhere?
It's a very large document, and in the process of trying to just quickly download it and stuff, you can see how well the graphics came through, or didn't, as the case may be.
So I'm actually going to change my preference, I would just like to get whatever that link is, rather than having 100 pages of printout.
Except are there large sheets that go longer?
They don't have to be, they've done, they've done it in an eight and a half by 11 format as well, they've simply done it, also, the use chart in a large format, because it's easier to read when it's in your hands. What we may do is what we've done with previous links, when the documents are huge, which is convert them, or portions of them, into PDFs to be linked, partly because many citizens, when we put it on the town website, who want to read it, don't have computers that are powerful to download documents this size, so we may break it up into component parts and PDFs.
Yep, so my preference for myself would be to receive the original single copy of it, though, rather than having it all processed and broken up, it's easier to deal with in the original form.
All right, so we have two electronic copies, and then probably seven paper copies. I'll send the electronic copy to everybody, and then just the paper ones to...
We've had... We've had folks patiently sitting in the audience, so I'll turn to you guys in case anybody has any questions or comments for us.
We do.
And I'll ask if you don't mind approaching the front table here, just because we are being recorded on ACTV. We're not being broadcast live, but they are recording the meeting and they can't hear you at home unless you speak into the mic. So thank you. And if you could introduce yourself so that the people at home know who you are.
I'm Melissa Perrot. I'm town meeting member for precinct one.
I'm sorry, Ms. Junie, Melissa?
Melissa Perrot, Perrot, P-E-R-O-T. And I'm, my question is that, is how this is sort of changing over time. We had a fairly reasonable plan from the Cecil Group, it seemed, that reflected a lot of what we talked about in the charrette and seemed to be something we could work with. But then the next thing that happened was, was the, the one from the town, I think, your proposed district boundaries, which did not, and caused me some concern. And I expressed those to Jonathan here. And he replied to that, and I said, I would like to have further discussion with him about it, which I'm trying to do at the meeting rather than taking his private time, but perhaps that's appropriate. But we have here on the Cecil Plan, a residential, a rural residential corridor. And that's being nibbled away at, first of all, by removing, well, on their plan even, removing the section north of the Mill River on the east side of Montague Road. Jonathan's argument was that, you know, there was a natural barrier with the road going into the recreation area. I claim that the natural barrier is not very natural there, and the one that is, is the Mill River itself. This plan here indicates a rural residential corridor, but on the other side of the road, there are numerous houses been, you know, shaded in. So it becomes very much less rural in that sense. There's also an ex, rural residential corridor along the back of the Coles property on Coles Lake Road. And that's been eliminated in the, in the first plan from the, from the town.
Ms. Perrot?
Yeah.
If I could just clarify one thing, just mostly so that people don't get led astray by your characterization of the plans. This is all coming from the Cecil Group at this point. There's no, there's no Cecil Group plan and town plan. So they've revised their plans on the basis of feedback that we've given them.
That you've given them.
Yeah, yes. So I just don't want you to think that there is sort of their plan and our plan at this point. This is the current version and earlier versions.
If the feedback that they've got is from you, then it becomes your plan and more than ours certainly.
Certainly, but we're still working through trying to take what they've given us and modify it as we see fit and make it into our plan.
But not as the original charrette and the public saw fit. So that's what concerns me is it's no longer really reflects what we did at that original meeting. And it seems to be morphing even further with this one, where even more is taken north of the, of the Mill River to go into this village zoning, form-based zoning. I assume that's what your orange is. That's where you're going to do the form-based zoning, correct?
Yes.
And the other thing is that it seems that every other residential area surrounding the civic center core area, whatever, has been preserved as rural residential as on the original current zoning map, but not that bit up Montague Road. And I can't think of anything that was more repeatedly expressed as a need for people was to keep that as it was, a residential, rural residential road. And it's not. And so what we started out with seems to have gradually been eroded, and it's a great concern to me. And it seems that our input is actually irrelevant. I think that's what I'm feeling now, is that it's irrelevant.
Okay. So I certainly don't want you to feel that way because I'm.
It's hard not to.
So.
Given the evidence here.
So just to try to explain a little bit about what the evolution of our thinking on this was, the, the plan that you've got, the second one from the right in front of you, that one where your hand is, was one of the earlier versions of this. When we were thinking about and talking about having a whole bunch of different zones within the village center planning area that all had different regulations attached to them and different mechanisms for regulating what was allowed there and what it could look like, and that those are all the different shades that you've got on that map in front of you. It quickly became clear that that would have been very difficult to create those regulations and enforce and implement them with essentially three or four or five different zoning, different flavors of zoning districts that we'd have to create to deal with each aspect of these different areas. So what we've evolved toward is a model that has this, the, the map, I think that's farthest to your left, that has the, the large central orange area. And then it has notably this dotted area extending along Montague Road that would have a form-based overlay district attached to it, but that would not itself be part of this village center district. And the idea behind the, the regulations that would govern that dotted area there, the intent is to preserve and enhance many of the things that you're telling us in terms of what your desires are for the residential character of that neighborhood, that that's the way that the regulations within that dotted area.
But you've taken a lot of it away.
So which specific areas are you referring to?
The piece knows, the pieces, pieces now, north of, north of the river.
The, the one that's changed in the most recent draft?
Yeah, this one was, was plonked in, and then now another piece has been plonked in. And I suppose this because its original uses got business in it, so it's allowed to be part of it or something. But, I mean, is there any reason why this has to be included in the, in the new zoning at all?
Which, why, why what has to be included in the new zoning?
You know, the residential strip along Montague Road.
So are you saying that you'd prefer not to have that dotted area including that, including that area, or are you objecting to the orangeness of it?
I'm not understanding what the difference is between the dotted area and the orange area entirely, except that supposedly, from what I've understood, the dotted area is to retain its character, whereas the orange area can be different. And it can have some business and residential and that kind of thing. It can be more mixed. And so I see this as being stay as it is kind of thing, with some exceptions when properties are, are added to or, I don't know, rebuilt or whatever, then it would, would come into play then. But essentially, this is being left alone, and this is not. And so I'm concerned that this corridor here, which was quite clearly the one major, one of the major things that we asked for when we had the charrette, is not being respected and that it's gradually being eroded with these little lumps being taken out of it. And I think that's most unfortunate. I suspect that this building here will be maintained on its historical basis, but these won't be. And I think that's a shame.
Okay.
And I think it makes me feel that what we've said in terms of how we'd like this to work is irrelevant. And I also think that we need to concentrate on the, on the area that's below the river, south of the river, in terms of this, this kind of zoning. And perhaps to, to leave this with its commercial and its residential and allow the development to take place in the, in the middle as it, as it was suggested originally here, in quite a reasonable way, I thought. And reflecting what was done in the charrette. But I don't see anything reflected there. And the fact that this is all, all happening without any of the connecting to, as I expressed to Jonathan, without any reference to any of the transportation issues at all, seems extraordinary to me that we would vote this in with this kind of increased density and development without having the transportation issues taken care of. And to say that one can be done without the other, it's extraordinary to me. I just can't conceive of that. You can go ahead and do this, but if you don't take care of the rest of it, it's a disaster.
So I definitely want you to understand that we are listening to you and we do value that.
I appreciate it. I appreciate having the opportunity to speak right now.
And so specifically with reference to what's included and what's not, this is changing every time we look at it.
How does that make, you know?
Right, well, it's not, it's not changing in the way that you'd like to see, but my, my point is that, my point is that it is changing and that we're responding to our discussions about it and the feedback that we're getting from people in the community. So you're objecting to the specific properties westward?
I suppose the people who own these properties have asked that they be included in the, in the village zoning.
If I could just finish my explanation of where we are with those. You were mentioning those properties specifically that have changed in between the two maps that you have there. We just got this map tonight. As Mr. Tucker told us earlier, it, it has changed through the inclusion of those properties. We, we haven't talked about why that happened or what the, whether that's a positive thing or a negative thing. You, you're telling us that you don't like that, you think that would be bad for the neighborhood. We are, we are open.
Well, I'm not understanding why it's happened for the first place.
Right. We don't have a sense of that yet. We haven't had a discussion yet about whether those properties should or should not be part of this. So I hear you telling us that you think that they should not be, and we will.
Not me personally. I think the whole of, of this neighborhood that, that has worked together to, you know, I'm here to express it, but these, these people are all, all behind the same thinking.
Yep. So I hear your input. We hear your input, and, and that will be talked about and discussed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your feedback. Mr. Tucker, I saw your hand.
I was going to say that the, the fact of the orange does not necessarily tell you what's going to happen there in several ways. First, until we get new sewer and water capacity in the village center, the likelihood that anything significant is going to happen is rather small. We, the capacity of the existing infrastructure is, is quite limited. So until that happens, not much is going to happen. We can change the zoning and some things might be able to occur within the existing capacity, but not much. Even when that happens, there, there's nothing that says that the owners of properties that are in the areas currently designated orange as the, the fundamental north Amherst Village Center form-based district will take an existing historic structure and change it into something else. They may reuse that historic structure for something, but there's nothing that says they're going to just tear things down. For one thing, we have demolition delay. In Amherst, we have a number of mechanisms that, that mitigate against whole-scale clearing of properties. So the, the fact that there is orange doesn't tell you what's going to happen. For instance, the orange extends, if you look at the map on the current, most current one, all the way to Route 116. And yet, once you get a certain distance west of Sunderland Road, you're in the floodplain. You can't, you can't build, you know, mixed-use, commercial uses there. That's, the land itself mitigates against what's possible. What this district does is create a consistent set of regulations about the form of things when they happen. It doesn't tell you what is necessarily possible on any given property or what the decision of a private property owner would be within the range of things that are possible. So we need to bear in mind all of those filters as we look at, at the range of possibility here. It's also the case that a number of the earlier plans were as labeled concept plans. They were reflections of the cross-section of what were often competing interests expressed at the design workshops. There was not a complete unanimity of, of opinion among all of those present. There were people who had one perspective, people who had another perspective. There were five or six perspectives for every major issue that, that came to bear. So as, as the consultants work with and refine the structure of this, which is really what they've been doing at this point, trying to make it into something that coherently says and works with the existing bylaw, what it is that the town intends and the community intends, this sorting and sifting of competing, often conflicting, interests will continue until we get to a, a point where we have to stop and then we decide whether we bring it forward or not, based on, on how, how the public reacts, how the board itself thinks it, it works. That's, that's true every time we do rezoning.
Okay, thank you. Yes, ma'am? If you don't mind, we would appreciate it. The folks at home will appreciate it.
Paola Di Stefano, 115 Montague Road.
I'm sorry, I missed your name.
Paola, P-A-O-L-A. I live on 63. I know that this is something that's in process. I just wanted to say that I agree with Melissa, and I think the thing that's sort of upsetting about this is that the orange portion seems to be growing, and it's not really clear where the so-called input is coming from. My sense of the meeting with the Cecil Group was that there was one person, Mrs. Garnier, who wanted her property to be commercial. And now I see that the Garnier property and the Puffer properties, which is her family, is included in the orange section. I, I think that this was intended to be a corridor. And what's going on with these two huge orange sections now is that you have an isolated ghetto of residential surrounded by business. So I'd just like to make a point for more transparency, and I've tried to come to all these meetings, and I only heard one family who had a personal stake in this want their business to be, want their house to be turned over to a business type thing. I think the corridor idea is really imperative to keep a feeling of neighborhood. And I think, as Melissa said, that the business, the potential business aspect means increased traffic and problems with traffic flow, which would adversely affect us as homeowners there. So that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The, the Mill property just north of the Mill River on the east side of the road has been in our consciousness all along as something that does have the potential to be more than just a residential property, as something that could support commercial activity there. So that's not something that's changed recently.
No, it's not that. It's the Garnier, the proximity of the Garnier property to Pat Holland and Bob Winnie, and the fact that it would be commercial right there at the entrance to Mill River that's somewhat upsetting. And then to see all the Puffer properties, which had been residential, now in this orange zone is kind of shocking.
Okay, so, so again, those were the properties I spoke earlier. This is the first time, literally in the last hour, that we've seen those properties as orange. So, so we will talk more about that and we do.
Right, and I understand you're getting feedback all the time, but if we see something like this and we don't know where it's coming from, that's upsetting. And because the orange seems to be growing, I don't see it going the other way. You know, it, we just seem to be having less and less residential, and that's, that's kind of upsetting.
Okay. The, the one other thing I wanted to point out in response to both your concerns and Ms. Perrot's is, and it might not be obvious from looking at the map, but there is a lot more going on here than what's on this one piece of paper. So I'm not sure how much is on the back table, but I have in front of me, we got this last week, a forty or fifty-page set of design regulations that would govern what's happening here. And that was what we were talking, that's what we've been talking about for most of the meeting.
Right, I wish I had had that so I could have referred to it as you thought of it.
So it is available on the website.
Yes, I know.
But my point there is, in particular, in the beginning of that document, there's a section that lays out the different street types, and we were touching on this in our earlier discussion, the importance of deciding basically which areas on this map correspond to which of those street types is an important factor because the, the regulations that are in here that talk about how these streets are laid out and how the buildings are going to look and interact with the neighborhood are very important in terms of determining the character of what goes in and the impact it's going to have. So it, it's very important to distinguish whether that section of Montague Road is going to be called a village residential street or a, I'm not sure what the other labels are, commercial or commercial civic. There's all different designations. And I, and I don't have the version that Jonathan has that, that has labels on them.
The residential, not the access road, the residential type is the one that would govern where the village form residence overlay district.
Okay, good. That's what I suspected, that I didn't have confirmation on here. So anyway, the, the information that's in those design guidelines really bears So, anyway, the, the information that's in those design guidelines really bears strongly on what that would look like. It's not just a distinction between orange and not orange, it's, it's variations within that, and a, a very thoroughly thought-out set of design guidelines for how, um, development could proceed within those areas, so that, that definitely is part of this also.
Yes, I know, but she's made no secret of the fact that she wants a commercial enterprise there, so I know that's what Mrs. Garnier wants, and, so...
Okay, thank you. Robyn Metzinda.
Um, I, I tend to agree with, with, with the speakers, and I, I recall, if you look on the, the current map, it is, it is a residential quarter right now, uh, north of the Mill River. And, and I recall that as being, as coming out of the Shiretts, and I agree with them that it was particularly right, right north of the Mill River, on either side, um, I don't think those should be orange, and I, and I, and I will, when we have the discussion about where the boundaries are going to be, I, I will advocate for, for putting those back into, you know, enclosed in the dotted line and not orange. Um, I, I don't know about the, the corner of, of Coles Road and, and Montague Road, I feel like that isn't, that's more of a, of a business setting now, but, but it is part of the quarter, so I, I don't really know how I feel about that, but, um, so, I, I agree with you, and I will support you, so.
Thank you. Ms. Jones.
Thank you. Cindy Jones, Coles. You don't have to worry too much about that corner, it's her 1768 family farmhouse, we're not going to do anything wacky with. Um, I have the same kind of comment, surprisingly, perhaps. We at the Shirets talked about, um, how the master plan wanted village center zoning and form-based code, and how by increasing use of village centers, we'd be preserving open space. And we talked about how we wanted to preserve the rural residential corridor, um, form, not density, rural residential form along Route 63, and how important that was. And the code actually, in draft form, says a hundred feet back from Route 63, um, would be that rural residential form-based code. And, so, the Cecil Group came up with the big house, little house, back house, barn as the form that gives a rural residential appearance so that, and the use would be less intense to protect our neighbors across the street. And I'm fully supportive of that concept, appreciating that we've had a commercial use on our home farm for 200 years. Um, so if I take that line up Route 63, a hundred feet back, um, the line that the Cecil Group drew doesn't correspond with that. I'm at, uh, Pulpit Hill Road up here, and it's a hundred feet back, and then I'm, I'm at, across from Pulpit Hill Road, it doesn't follow a property line or a river or anything, it, it just goes a hundred feet back and straight down through two properties, not on the property line. And then all of a sudden, it starts jutting back toward, not on a river, on a property line, which is a wacky way to do zoning, um, back to what's currently commercial land, and I think it's following the current zoning, which is not, you're supposed to start from scratch and figure out what's right. So, I, I was kind of surprised that the rural residential form wasn't entirely along Route 63, and that north of Coles Road, after the hundred foot back, which is 86, 92, and 100 Coles Road, why those didn't fit with the village center zoning. So, to make it clear, I, I've kind of drawn a picture. See, if you had the line of a hundred foot back, then, then that would not be the protected rural residential form anymore, that would be part of the village center north and south of Coles Road. I'm on, I'm not clear, I'm getting blank stares.
No, no, I'm referring to two things at once here.
Yeah.
I look a little confused, it's because I am.
I'm sorry. So, I kind of drew it here, but, so Route 63, this, um, the area that they're talking about they get put back in and that is still out here is, across from Mill River, is a hundred-foot-back protective form to protect the big house, little house, back house, barn form, and that was supposed to go all the way up Route 63. And so, why is it farther than a hundred feet back north of Coles Road? I'd like you to look at this fresh and not like the old zoning that was there, which made no sense.
Um, so, um, to, to speak to that specifically, I, I do believe that at one point, and it's not reflected in the current map, but, um, but we had that same character that goes up Montague Road also extending out along...
Which didn't, yeah.
I, I don't want to speak to whether or not that's desirable, but, um, it, it's possible that this is incorporating a reference to that, so.
Yeah, and I don't know why it didn't go all the way to the hundred-foot line.
So, so...
Has this made sense in the village center zoning goals?
I don't want to get too deeply into the distinction of exactly where these lines go right now, because we will talk about that and, and make decisions on it.
Mm-hmm.
So, if, I mean, just from looking at this map, it's not at all clear to me whether it's following property lines or whether it's following existing zoning or a hundred foot or what. But, in our, our newer zoning, we, we have been tending to follow property lines more than arbitrary distances and setbacks to avoid splitting a property into two different zones, so that's another factor there. It's not just a, a distance aspect all the time.
Is that an acceptable legal way to zone property by property lines, not by features?
Yeah, it's preferable, actually, because then you don't end up with individual properties in more than one zoning district for, to the confusion of all, including property...
And we do that, we do that all the time, like our whole town zoning is...
Well, you could do it along the property line that's closest to the hundred foot, is what I'm asking.
So, you, you, you can, um, but our, our existing zoning doesn't all work that way, perhaps even doesn't even mostly work that way.
Okay.
So, may I ask a question?
Yes.
Um, Cindy, are you suggesting that the property at the corner of Coles Road and Montague Road be, you know...
No, I'm talking about north of Coles Road, this area back a hundred feet along the property line, this should be the village center zoning like what's next to it, because we agreed to rural residential form, uh, and, um, light use along Route 63, a hundred feet back. We, we said beyond a hundred feet back, that was the buffer of the neighborhood, and beyond a hundred feet back, this, this area was going to be the village center.
Well, what I'm asking is, is this piece here part of this, or is it part of this?
Well, this, because it's been commercial for 270 years, it's going to be remaining the village center character that already is, and that's what Cecil Group decided.
So, in other words, this green line here doesn't have any meaning?
I just drew a straight line like this and wondered why it was inconsistent. I mean, it's similar to their question, it's like, huh, we had a hundred-foot line protecting the side of the road, and, and the line kind of jumps in and out in weird places, and they don't like this one, and I don't mind that one as much as, as they do, but I don't understand this one, so. It's the same general question about that line. Um, secondly, can you, um, provide that link publicly to the new version of the document?
As soon as we've downloaded it in a form we can put on the website, yes.
Okay, and then...
That's what we were talking about before.
This is, um, superseded by an APR now, and they, I don't know if you want to say it's not light industrial anymore. And will this definitely be on town meeting?
That's, that's not on the, yeah.
Yeah, it doesn't matter, but it's not...
That, that's not part of it.
And APR is not the same as zoning in any case? The APR doesn't change the underlying...
For instance, we've got this on top of the Schwartz Farm, which is APR, so it doesn't...
Okay, it's an APR.
It's a form of ownership, it doesn't...
What's the likelihood of this going to town meeting in the fall?
That's what we're aiming at.
Hi?
Cool.
I mean, which is, which is not to say that it's, it's guaranteed, this is big and it's complicated, and we're working as hard as we can. Um, I would very much like it just to see it go to fall town meeting. I also wouldn't want it to fall down on its face because we weren't ready and hadn't worked everything through yet, so I understand that you're desiring fast motion on it, but I think that we, as well as you probably, don't want something to fail because it's not worked out fully.
Actually, I'd rather it was tried and failed than not tried.
Okay, so that's...
Um, and, and honestly, I think it'd be easier to pass the second time if it fails the first time.
Okay.
Um, and fast in four years doesn't feel fast.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Sorry. Robyn, then Chris.
Before you leave, you're, the hundred-foot, um, line, is that, is that in, in the, in the documents that we have, or that was, that came out of the Shiretts?
I think it was in the bylaw, right? In terms, I think the rural, um, form-based code was a hundred foot back on, on Route 63 in, in the thing.
The, um, that was when we were talking about multiple districts or multiple districts with multiple sets of rules within those multiple districts, and that was part of what Jonathan was talking about before, that it just, that proved to be unmanageable. However, in the most recent, um, language, uh, there is, uh, there are for each of the village centers, um, specific and distinct development regulations, um, form-based regulations, and for instance, I just found the one that's specific to North Amherst Village Center. In North Amherst Village Center, the village residential character is comprised largely of a connected farmhouse configuration of buildings. To maintain the sense of character, new residential forms located upon village residential streets, which is what we're talking about, shall follow a similar composition, including district building masses, distinct building masses with pitched roofs that frame shared open spaces and are oriented with the short side of the building configuration facing the primary public street, and there would be a graphic accompanying it. Basically, um, as, as drawn, uh, the street is in the overlay district, and the street is controlled by, uh, those regulations. So, um, I think that answers your question.
Okay.
I hope it answers your question.
Could you make a decision about whether it's going to be on town meeting before petition articles are due? And I know you can't answer that now, but I would appreciate it if you, I'll rephrase that. I would appreciate it if you could make a decision before petition articles are due, so we have some latitude to do something if we feel like we need to.
Do you have a date for that?
Yes.
Um, citizen petitions are due September 12th, so you would need to make that decision.
Wait a minute, what's that?
Can I submit a petition article and you throw it out if you have something completed? I mean, I could do it that way.
I, I believe there is a later deadline, um, for whether or not it goes on the warrant, but I'm not a hundred percent sure about that.
Actually, it's actually September 7th is, at noon, is the deadline for citizen zoning petitions.
Which is next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday.
Which is...
So, you want a fallback?
I, I, yeah, I mean, we've been wait, we've been waiting for a long time, we were asked not to build anything in our commercial zone until the zoning changes, it's been years, and really, I, I do expect it'll happen, I have full faith in you guys, I really do, but...
Yeah, no, I understand, I just wanted to...
Cindy, talk to somebody in the, um, in Town Hall. Um, I, I don't want to be the, the ruler of what the, the procedure is for getting stuff on the warrant, but the Select Board signs the warrant at a much later date, and I believe there is precedent for submitting an article but not going forward with it, not putting it on the warrant, so you might, you might have some latitude to, to submit a petition article, um, if you want to have something as a fallback plan, and then if you're happy with what we're doing and it is going on the warrant, you can withdraw your article.
Pretty much happy with anything you do, as long as it's something on the warrant.
The warrant isn't signed until October 7th, so you have, you can withdraw an arti...
Are you sure about that?
I believe so.
Okay, that, that's the part I'm not sure about.
Or if, I think you can withdraw it up to the point of the signing of the warrant. If you don't withdraw it, you can always move to dismiss.
True, or refer it.
I'd want you to know it's friendly to, I'm not trying to be altercational at all, I support exactly what you're doing. I support your doing it or not doing it, and that's my only point. Thanks.
Thank you.
Chris, I think I skipped you earlier.
So, I had a question about zoning amendments, and I remember something about if they were, um, defeated, then they couldn't come back for two years unless they were substantially changed, is that correct?
Unless they're supported by the planning board, is the proviso?
Yes, and that's...
And that's just petition articles, I think.
Yes.
So, it doesn't apply to articles that you all carry through?
Correct, um, because i- if we're bringing it forward, if we brought it back, by definition almost, it would have the support of the planning board. Okay, that was interesting. So, can we move on from village center rezoning?
Okay.
Do you have anything new on official zoning map conversion?
We changed the language very slightly, um, and I don't even remember what the change was, it was a very, very small change.
Had to do with the date?
It was the date, yeah.
Yes, exactly. Yeah, it was the, the date for the, the current official zoning map, yeah.
Okay.
I have a question about that.
Yes, please.
Um, in the second paragraph, I don't understand or don't know if, if the clause from time to time does anything. It seems a little strange to me, why can't it just start out amendments shall be shown? From time to time, amendments shall be shown.
You could do it that way, that's a, that's a standard...
Yeah.
...lawyerly filler.
I think it's, seems a little strange, so, I don't, I don't mind, whatever.
And you will be getting, uh, we're going to have a busy, you're going to have a busy meeting on the, the 7th, um, you're going to be getting a presentation from Michael Olken.
Should I give him some sense of how much time he should take?
Yes, and how much time he doesn't have. Yes, to the degree to which he can...
Um, let's schedule him at five o'clock so that he can start, leave things off and give him half an hour. All right, um, so was that all on GIS?
I believe so.
Uh, permit criteria.
You had, uh, previously reviewed the permit criteria, and this is again aimed at the spring, so there's no real rush on this, but, um, and requested some changes. We incorporated those in, largely in red. Um, uh, one thing we didn't, uh, wait a minute, I don't think I do. I believe we caught all of the recommendations that you made, there were a couple of places where we have added new language simply for clarification or, or expansion. We have condensed some of the sections where there were highly related issues, we've put them in the same subsection. The ones that referred to, um, general nuisances and, and listed 17,000 offensive things were either broken up or, um, removed to other areas. On the third page, um, didn't get to this under 11.24, there's a new red section where that similar section was crossed out. It said, it should say C-section 11.242 period, uh, or, um, something similar. We'll, we'll work on that, the specifics are not, are not accurate anymore in that one. And, trying to see, we took the parking and sign regulation references in, under the special permit findings out entirely, of the special permit findings, and put them under the, uh, generalized guidelines under 11.242, and then referenced, and, and that larger section will simply be referenced. We'll clean this up for next time, too. This was done.
In the cleaning up, one minor thing, I noticed that you introduced, on the very last page, you introduced the new section number for the last traffic item, 11.2438.
Yes, we reorganized some sections.
And there's a reference to what was the old number in that, item number four paragraph there?
Ah, yes. In fact, there are changes like that outside of these sections, and we probably should, should check throughout the bylaw.
That was my only comment. You guys have anything else on that?
More cleanup, the, uh, 10.37, 10.387, top of the second page. More cleanup, the 10.37, 10.387, top of the second page. It should be section 11.24.
Yes, you're right.
I've missed so many meetings. Can you refresh my memory about how this relates to the development modification?
It's-
It's rather basic for permits.
It's sort of an offshoot of our discussions about development modification, when we've talked about the requirements for special permit as compared to the requirements for site plan review. And some of this has stemmed from my noting that there's a ton of overlap in the existing bylaw between what's required for a special permit and what's required for a site plan review. They're very similar, but they're not quite the same, and I've always felt that that creates a bit of a strange, a bit of difficulty in compliance and understanding, just the simplicity of our regulations in general. So, so part of this is an effort to, well, to simplify it definitely. And what it does is, is it takes away almost all of the specific findings under the special permit and essentially directs them over into the site plan review criteria, so that the special permit, in order to get a special permit, you'd also have to meet all the stuff that's in 11.24, but you wouldn't have a separate laundry list of special permit finding requirements under 10.38 as we do now.
As part of the background for this, we looked at special permit finding language for about a dozen or more communities, mostly in Western Massachusetts, and they fell into three general groups, extremely simple. Basic criteria, sometimes with a listing of potential conditions, and then an attempt to recreate what essentially is in 11.24, where you have all of the various criteria, including those that have to do with site issues and so forth, as opposed to the use itself, the discretionary character of the use itself. So part of the intent here is to separate out those criteria which have to do specifically with what makes a special permit special, and what makes it a discretionary permit, and have those criteria under the 10.38. And then reference the specific, sort of essentially, performance standards that are under 11.24, that are all of the kinds of site issues, which under the site plan, what is previously the site plan review regulations are somewhat more detailed. They include things that were not necessarily at least named, although they might well have been encountered under the criteria that had been used under the special permit findings. So in some ways, we're sort of reorganizing it and making it a bit simpler. And part of the intent is to, if this is logically organized, then the development modification issues are simpler and easier to deal with at some level. That was part of how this got started, in addition to the inconsistency between the two sets, and overlap between the two sets of criteria. Part of the intent here is to make it easier to deal with development modification when we do.
Okay, thanks.
Excuse me.
The other thing that was concluded last time was that as you proceed with this, and before you get very much further, you need to start having conversations with the zoning board of appeals. This is not a change to undertake without their consultation.
Yeah, and so in particular, I would like to have, it doesn't need to be in the immediate future, but I would like for that to be a specific structured meeting, where maybe we ask them to call an administrative meeting and come in here and meet jointly with us, because, I mean, this is their bread and butter, and we totally should not and cannot proceed without-
That's right.
-a specific discussion with them, not just letting them know about it.
Exactly. There are two other, if I may, there are two other things that are for you on the, in your packet. One is a draft notification that we're, public notice that we're going to use for next Wednesday's meeting with both text and some graphics to help illustrate what it is that form-based code does. The other document is my first cut, and I stress, very, very first cut, at trying to get a sense of, we've, we're well into the process of visioning and creating new zoning for two of the village centers, what do we do next? And this is a listing of potential activities, and in fact, the town manager is interested in pursuing funds at this fall town meeting to complete the zoning for the Gateway District, and I would like to recommend for your consideration, at least, that that be expanded to the entire downtown, so that there is a consistency there, we're not just dealing with a segment of the downtown at a time. And for purposes of discussing that, on the back of that sheet, I've indicated a prospective geographic scope for that that includes areas principally within the downtown business districts, plus the Gateway District as identified under the visioning process, but also includes some other areas that are immediately adjacent to the downtown. For instance, north of Kellogg Avenue, there are some properties there that are not in the business district, but are, that stretch of Kellogg Avenue is in entirety, it's a straight run all the way back until you hit the slope and it heads northeast. If you're going to create form-based standards, that entire street should be treated the same, and similarly with other areas. The section of the Common going all the way down to Route 9 is similarly included, so that, although we're not including the Arboretum section of the Common that Amherst College has care of, the bulk of the Common and its immediate surroundings would be within this. So this is just a, we're starting to approach the question of whether or not we're going to ask for funds to have the next piece of this be the downtown with the Gateway, and then what happens next? And my recommendation, at least on, as shown here, is that the following effort would be the general residence district, because that has been such a bone of contention, that we need to have a public process whereby the public gets to say what they, what they want. We need to physically identify the different neighborhoods and approach. Right now, we have one zoning district with one set of dimension regulations, and there are 10 or 11 utterly different neighborhoods. And it's, one size does not fit all. And then you can see the others, just again, to get the conversation started.
I just wanted to repeat and draw attention to the first of those two announcements that you just had, or items that you just had, Jonathan, regarding the colorful announcement flyer. So that, for anybody still watching at home, because our audience has all left us here, we are having a public information session at the planning board meeting next Wednesday, which will be September 7th, for the specific purpose of talking about, or having a presentation from the Cecil Group on the current plans for North Amherst and Atkins Corner. That'll be at 7:00 at the planning board meeting in this room, the town room at town hall, on September 7th. So we welcome the public to that meeting.
We will, sometime tomorrow, possibly, certainly by Friday, we will have the new information from the consultants on the website.
And we are expecting to meet on September 7th. Before that planning board meeting, the zoning subcommittee, I mean, is expecting to meet on the 7th and the 21st. Is there anything else? Rob?
I feel like we should start in line with what Cindy was saying. If this is going to have a chance, if form-based code is going to have a chance at this fall town meeting, we need to do outreach now. And one of the things that I would suggest is, is we often hear that, you know, we didn't have enough time to understand the zoning. So is it possible to mail out to all town meeting members, you know, this 100-page document in September rather than October? So that they have two months, even if it's not the final version. I don't know how we make that decision. We can ask town meeting, or TMCC maybe, they can pay for it or something.
Yes, so certainly talking to TMCC about it is fine. I guess I would suggest, and this is just my opinion, that this particular piece of paper that we have in front of us is maybe a little bit too early. I mean, I understand that people want to get it early and digest it. We have to balance sort of the resemblance it bears to what they're finally going to get against that, though, because if we give them a very early draft of something that doesn't really look like what they end up considering, then we'll get negative feedback on that also. So I do, but I do support the idea of getting something to them as early as possible. I'm okay if that's a draft and not a final form, but I think we're not quite there yet, just because we're still actively making probably fairly substantial changes to it. I mean, it's changed a lot between our last meeting and this meeting.
I wonder-
Probably will continue to do so.
I wonder if what would be most useful going to town meeting members is some kind of a summary, shorter summary. People are not going to read a 109-page document, other than the true believers, the ones who read it, the civic believers. Something that summarizes the form and intent and purposes of the, of the document. And then the document itself is on the website, or there are hard copies available in libraries and so forth. Asking people to read that much is, they're welcome to come and do that, but I don't think that the town meeting members in general will welcome that. I think that they want things explained, rather than, because part of what, part of what happens is even, even if, at this more, as we discovered tonight, from two different directions. As I said earlier, you have conflicting, within any given village center, you have conflicting visions of what it ought to be, and part of the intent here is to, to the degree possible, embrace those interests, but to the degree that it's not possible, you have to make a choice and see if there isn't some way to compromise and split the difference so that everyone is at least, you know, equally happy and unhappy at the result. So I think an explanation of what this does is probably the most useful thing to do. Work with the consultants on that.
Well, you actually have, I mean, the draft outline is a start. And what about, I remember some years ago, in one of the override campaigns, the Bulletin did a, like an FAQ article on it, this would do this. How can we make them do that again for form-based code? Because people, if they see it in the paper, then it becomes real. It's not going to become real until you actually see it in paper.
We could offer, we could try and draft both a summary and an FAQ, or both combined, and offer it to Scott Merzbach and see what he does with it. In the past, when releasing, you know, like the SCOG report back in 1974, they developed, you know, an insert and put it in the Bulletin, but it was a different Bulletin than that. There are a number of options.
With respect to TMCC, Rob, could we impose on you to sort of liaise with them? I mean, I know you're not a member of the committee anymore, but you do, you have worked with them. And so as we go into fall town meeting, maybe you could go to one or two of their meetings and kind of keep them appr-, I mean, I also know that they're following what we're doing, but they don't have direct contact with us. And I do want to make sure that they're aware of what we're doing and supportive of our efforts to educate people and that we're able to work with them.
Along those lines.
If that's something I do be able to do.
Sure, but along those lines. I thought about a couple of times posting something to the TMCC listserv, so at least some members would get it. But I'm not sure, you know, whether I need to get permission to do that in advance, to say something about, to announce a meeting, no, but to say, you know, this is what form-based code is, or this is, or this is where, this is what we're going to be trying to do, to sort of represent what we're doing, rather than just say, you know, give a fact. Would you mind if I-
I don't have a problem with you doing that, no.
I mean, I'm not going to advocate or anything, that's not the place for it, but I feel like it's more than just saying the next zoning subcommittee meeting is September 7th. Okay, so I'll do something.
If, if you want, if you forward to us a draft of what you were thinking of doing, we might be able to provide you with links to other information onsite or on the web or something like that, that you could offer to people as well.
And so the only other thing I'll add is, I just want to emphasize the importance of getting stuff on the website. And so with respect to this particular thing, I would argue, don't let formatting and breaking it up and manipulating it be an impediment. I mean, if it's, if it's just a matter of posting a link to whatever they sent us, or posting a huge document, or whatever it is, I would rather be able to say to people, here it is, it's up there in some form, rather than if it's going to take us a week to do something about it, to create our own PDFs or whatever it is that we need to do.
It won't take us a week.
Okay, so I'm just arguing, both specifically for this document and in general, the more we have up there, the more that we can say that we have up there, the better position that we'll be in. I don't want us to be in a position of people coming in and saying, we never saw this draft, we looked on the website, it wasn't there. That does not help the cause.
I think, I think the balance we're trying to strike is being able to make sure that people, once they get to the website, can download it. This is, I'll tell you right now, even we, and you know how powerful the town system is, could not coherently download all of this, parts of these pages printed up partially or with gobbledygook on them.
How are we going to deal with that? Are we going to go back to Ted or Josh and ask him to send it again?
We could ask them to send the various chapters in this, and there are chapters as individual PDFs, because that's what we've done in the past, that people can, and that's in fact, that's why if you go on the website now and click on the zoning bylaw or on the master plan, those are all broken up into smaller PDF sections, because the presumption is that most people don't have computer systems powerful enough to download all of what's in the entire document.
So my, my point is just-
Get it up there.
Get it up there. And if that means getting something up now and then replacing it with a better version in the future, I think that works also. I mean, if you're saying that it's not a big deal and that you can have smaller versions up there relatively quickly, then that's fine, too. But I wouldn't want people to not be able to access it in the interim.
All right, it's 7:00, unless there's objection, we will adjourn.